First thing is the approval of the agenda.
Moved to approve.
Second. Okay, we've got a motion by Grant, second by Jim to approve the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any citizens to be heard? I hear we got, see, we got some citizens here. Is there someone that wants to speak on any particular item or? Okay, come forward and identify yourself at the speak. Mike, please.
Can I have my mask off or I can talk loud enough?
I was asking you to remove it.
Good morning. My first name is Marissa West and I'm with Legends Bar and Grill in South Moorhead.
Okay.
And you can hear me, am I clear?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, members of the board. We appreciate the opportunity to be heard. We're desperate to break the silence and speak on behalf of several local small businesses in the hospitality industry. Please help us. Our governor's decision to pause our industry along with shutting down gyms and bars cannot be justified any longer without help. Our community needs these businesses and gathering places to reopen in order to survive, both mentally and financially. I understand the reason for the pause. However, North Dakota's numbers are declining and they are not shut down. So is shutting down our gathering places the best answer? We cannot be held to the metro's numbers. We are not equals. That's why we are called Greater Minnesota. And it is North Dakota that we need to be compared to. We are neighbors and need to be led together through this pandemic. When our industry was paused, the world did not stop moving. It did not encourage community to stay home. It has increased all travel to the Fargo area, thus overpopulating every bar, every restaurant, shopping center, and coffee shop, especially over the holidays. Instead of increasing human density in all of these places, thus increasing COVID in the Fargo area, why not consider opening everything up so that we can spread our people throughout the community and truly slow the spread? If it is actually about social distancing ourselves, then how is it safer to shop at Menards, Walmart, and the grocery store where hundreds of people touch all the same items? And that is considered safer than patronizing our bars, our restaurants, where tables are six feet apart, beverages are served in separate glasses, and food on separate plates? No one understands the importance of distancing, cleanliness, and sanitation in a public environment as well as we do. We have been practicing. This is a matter of good business for us for decades. We have always been held to a higher standard, as we should, but with COVID, we've increased our measures tenfold. Our customers wear masks, they wear them upon entry and while passing others, and have even awkwardly stopped greeting friends and family with hugs and handshakes because it is deemed unsafe. Why can't our customers have the same options that they do at stores? They can either understand the risk and enter masked up, or they can be served curbside. That's all we're asking for. Give our people the option. We continually reshift and rebuild our business structure and behavior for this community, just as requested and just so we can operate. But our Minnesota weather is not supportive of patio-only service. And it doesn't support curbside service either. That is our only lifeline right now. It is our customers and the experiences we provide them with that breathe life into us, that breathe life into us. In the 20 years we've spent in this business, I've never felt such exhaustion. We work 10 times harder to survive curbside for a fraction of what our business actually needs to truly survive. We have no other options. With just under 50 employees to support, and that's just in our two locations, not including all the others or all of our families, we will lose our people that we continue to invest in and a community that they invest in. These people are crucial to our businesses. And we are essential, because now they will need to consider working in Fargo to make ends meet, and it's beyond devastating. Based on the Minnesota Licensed Beverage Association and data collected from the Minnesota Department of Health, please explain to me the sense in shutting down our industry. We have contributed to less than 2% of COVID cases in the state. 2%. If we are truly in this together, then why are we the only businesses shut down? How is it possible to deem our business unessential when for many it is essential to survive? Consider this at the very least, the potential long-term damage to Moorhead will likely be a complete devastation. Think of all the jobs and tax revenue that has been lost or paused, thus putting our people during the holidays in a state of financial distress. Small business owners, our employees, our families, sales teams, delivery force, food vendors, repair companies, contractors, the rental communities, hockey community, and our athletes that need to play out their senior year sports, which will play a crucial part of their collegiate career. Yet on the other side of the river, as they know it, continue, life continues for all these working people, for all the kids that are still in school, and all the sports that are still gathering. For reference, if my location was just 10 blocks west in North Dakota, I would still be able to make rent and payroll, as well as have access to over $360,000 available as a result of being economically damaged from COVID. If we are in this together, then why are some families going without a paycheck while others are not? Why are some struggling while others are on the rise? If this continues, it will crush this town and Moorhead's small business forever. That is why we're here. That cost, the cost that small businesses endure when the governor's dial doesn't turn is immeasurable. We have done everything asked. We've shifted gears, we've stepped up every level of health and safety for our people, but we are running out of the financial ability to continue, as well as faith that we're really in this together. Once the threads of this community now feels like complete isolation, and it doesn't make sense, please help us take care of our people. They need us now more than ever. Lastly, for many of us, this is our livelihood, and the hospitality industry has in fact impacted countless lives. We've supported every demand put upon us with the pandemic starting nearly nine months ago, with two shutdowns, increased restrictions to operate, and have since been in survival mode. Please allow us to operate with the highest level of health, safety, and protection as we have been and will continue to. We are not denying that COVID is real. In fact, I have lost two loved ones to this virus. But closing down the hospitality industry isn't saving lives, it's crushing them. We do not want Moorhead to die. And right now, the decision made by our leaders is encouraging us not to do business in Moorhead and to take our people with us to Fargo. As the leaders of our city, the city I choose to live and do business in, I'm asking you to help. I'm asking you to stand up for our community and the 42,000-plus people who call Moorhead, Minnesota, home. How about we choose to be that courageous community that lived up to the core values they promised their citizens? Values of integrity, service, and commitment. We require a personal commitment from each staff member and elected official to work together and develop efficient, enduring processes to achieve common goals. We are begging, please find the balance. I know you feel like your hands are tied, but there's always a way. Each one of you has been chosen to be in this position at this time during this pandemic for a reason. Thank you.
Any comments by the commissioner through your mic or your talk?
Well, I think it's, one, I really appreciate hearing from citizens. I think it's important for all of us to hear the stories that are out there, to understand everyone's perspective. And we are in a tricky place, but we are also a border city, and that is different than a lot of the other cities in Minnesota. And so I would really encourage our administrator, Steve Larson, to draft a letter on behalf of this county board to the governor's office. I know there's an announcement that will be made tomorrow to really share this story that we have businesses that are in crisis mode, that will be gone forever to another state because, just because they've kept staff on, they haven't laid them off, they've kept them to try to get them a paycheck, shouldn't be something that's going to penalize them in the end. Yes, there are unemployment options for some businesses, there aren't unemployment options for small business owners that still need to make payments. And that's where I'm at. I think we need to send a desperate letter to, not a desperate letter, but a letter to the governor that says there are desperate situations in this border community. And it's not just Moorhead, it's all of the cities within Clay County. And it's imperative that we do so.
Mr. Chairman, thank you, Marissa, for. I think it's been irresponsible on the part of the state of Minnesota, not for what they did, but for what they didn't do. And that's forcing a certain segment of our businesses to close and not providing the financial stability to do it. That's the frustrating part to me, that, you know, we had CARES dollars and we tried to do our best in terms of providing some relief to businesses throughout our county. But that was a drop in the bucket compared to the losses you have suffered. I just, I just couldn't imagine myself being in that position where all of a sudden, everything's taken from you at no fault of your own. And it was, it was done to benefit everybody. I think we all know that that was the intent, was so that, to stop this COVID from getting worse. But I agree with Commissioner Mojo. I want a, I want a letter going out today to the governor, making it clear that, as far as I'm concerned, they have failed in their responsibility and that they need to step up to the plate. And if they're not, if they're not going to give you equal opportunity that you have with your competition, who is going to be allowed, or who is allowed to, you talked about it, Marissa, in your statements about what's going on 10 blocks west of you. That's so disheartening. And I think we need to, I know that they, I know that they did a special legislation, was it yesterday, I think, and I think there was $200 million or something like that. That's not going to do it. It's not going to do it, it's not going to come close to doing it. And I do agree, I'm going on here, but I do agree that I think that, if something isn't changed shortly, we are going to lose permanently an awful lot of businesses, especially in Moorhead. But I also know of small, small-town bars and restaurants that are hurting just as bad, that depend on this. So this is, it's been devastating for what's happened to your particular area of the economy. So I'm going to, you know, encourage us to send something today. And, you know, at some point in time, we need to start getting back to, to reality and, and, but we need to do it safely. And I, you know, I trust, I trust in your businesses that you're going to do the responsible thing now to, because we know of the potential devastation that this can cause to families and to friends. So we always need to be mindful of that with whatever that we do. So, Mr. Chairman, I am going to support a letter, first off, that says we need to, or that the state needs to do much more than what they have in terms of the ability to fund these businesses that they've closed, and then to have a serious dialogue about how we get all of these folks in Clay County who were doing business, what's our, what's our track to get them back open and running?
Are you supporting then opening the business, or are you supporting giving more money, handing out money?
Well, I-
I know the bill yesterday, I think they plan on handing out some money, but that was just passed by the Senate, I think. I don't know if that's been signed yet or not, so.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, they did, last night, legislature did, both the House and the Senate did agree to move forward a bill to, to the governor's desk for the 216 million, roughly 88 million that would come from the Department of Revenue to specific, specific businesses that have been affected directly from the last executive order, 2020-99. There'll be another 14 million for convention centers and theaters, and then about roughly $114 million, which we don't, we haven't received the exact allotment, but in Clay County, it'll be somewhere between 1.1 and 1.3 million.
I think when you spread that money out over everybody, it isn't going to be that much money. I mean, it's going to help, but it's not going to, not being open for business, but so I think I agree with Mr. Campbell, with, I think I would also support a letter to the governor. I mean, I wish I knew what he's going to be talking about, or what his recommendations are going to be tomorrow, but I don't. So we don't know how to go on that, you know, so probably he's already going to allow opening or not, but we can't. If he allows not opening, that's going to be another two, three weeks, more than likely. Go ahead, Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I also support sending a letter immediately to the governor and his staff requesting that the lockdown end immediately. Tomorrow is probably better than never, but today would be even better than that. And the absurdity of having some businesses open, go to the Dilworth Walmart, it's full of people every day that it's open. Why are they singling out one industry out of all the industries and making them pay the price and supposedly bear the burden for all the rest of us? It's wrong, it needs to end right now. Thank you. And thank you to all of you for persisting through this very difficult time. It's very admirable. My hat's off to you. As a business owner on both sides of the river, I can relate to it completely. But we're lucky that we, in our business, have been able to survive. It's been very difficult in the dance business, but thank you all very much for keeping going here in Moorhead. We need your businesses to stay in Moorhead. Thank you.
I support sending the letter also, but I think we should ask the city of Moorhead to join us in that letter, and I think that, you know, may add some significance to the importance of what we're asking them to do. You know, it's, it's difficult, but I, you know, Steve, I would encourage you to get together with the Moorhead City Manager too and see if there's anything that we can do directly also as a county and the city, you know, individual cities that are experiencing these problems, to see what other kinds of help we can offer right now, so.
Mr. Chair. I did listen to the Moorhead City Council meeting last night, and Marissa West and the group gave her impassioned speech, and there was no action taken by the city council. My concern with, I had talked to Steve on Friday and told them, you, that I was wanting to make sure that we sent a letter on behalf of Moorhead and the county. And they are busy with some other efforts in terms of utilities and otherwise, but I'm not sure if they're ready to take this step, and I don't want it to delay the important message that needs to come out.
Mr. Chairman, if I can talk just again a little bit, I, you know, and I've been, I've been emphasizing, real concern not only about this business deal, but about the spread of COVID and where a lot of it is happening, not necessarily from within businesses, but, but, you know, we've got documentation that shows that probably 77% of our active cases, 75 to 77%, are in that range group from 15 to 45 years old. Now, the 15 to 21 obviously don't go to your establishments on a regular basis, but, you know, I think, I think we need to have the community and the businesses help as well in terms of understanding this. And Marissa, you talked about how your customers are acting and what they're doing within your business, and I think that's great. And I think that can go a long way in even reducing that 2% that you talked about. So, you know, so having said that, I, you know, and I, our public health department is here, and we've been trying to put out public messages about the importance of the wearing the mask and the six-foot distancing and that type of thing. We do, we do that because we, you know, we've got some science that says that that helps. So as we talk about businesses opening back up, we really need, we really need to have businesses to be responsible in making sure that those guidelines that are put out, not by us as politicians, but by people who have the expertise in what this pandemic does and how it spreads, and how we can help prevent that. So, you know, I, you know, I think, I think, one, we need to give you some sort of opportunities to get your doors back open, and if they refuse to do that, then we need a completely different game than what they're playing right now in terms of $200 million to you folks. So that's how I think we need to draft this letter. I don't know what hit the governor's intentions are. I know I look at our report now for today, and we're going to hear from Kathy, and it appears that our numbers are going in the right direction in terms of active cases in Clay County, but, but this pandemic is still scary, and we still need to have responsibility on the part of everybody. If you're going to go to a bar or restaurant in Fargo, you should put a mask on when you go in there.
Is there someone else that would like to speak from the audience?
Thank you, I'm Josh West, Marissa's husband. I'll come from a different viewpoint. I also own a business in Moorhead, J.T. Lonna Landscape. I know that, like you guys had said, there's some relief money out there, but I would suggest you guys, as the county, when you get the money, to, I was affected on the first round, second round, I wasn't affected. So I do think that, like, this isn't a one-size-fits-all situation based on bar size, employee size, all that. So, and what I'm saying is, obviously, the county, if you get round numbers, 10 million or whatever, I don't think that, like, you can take the 20 businesses and say, all right, everybody gets 10 grand or whatever. I just think that if there's a capability of looking at books and numbers and of all these businesses in Moorhead and kind of allotting a certain percentage based on, you know, she didn't have to keep all of her employees on, she kept all of her employees on. I'm not saying other people don't deserve it either, but I just wanted to speak on behalf of a different business that wasn't shut down on the second round. So I think that it needs to be considered that when the county gets money, on how it gets to be dispersed instead of a one-size-fits-all situation. And I do, I guess, after that meeting last night, it was very depressing going home. Like Jenny said, it just felt like it went on deaf ears. I feel like we have some kind of movement here, but I also think you guys need to plan for the what-if. Our person of contact has been pretty reliable, and it sounds like he's, Walz is going to push this another month. Every time we've heard something from the person that we know, it's been right on. So I'm just asking, what if? What if he pushes it another month? Like, it isn't going to work. This is not a threat or anything else, but, you know, we are looking at other avenues, she's looking at other avenues. My shop and land is actually for sale. It's been for sale pre-COVID. And I feel like if the city or county isn't going to help small businesses that I'm tied to or anybody else is tied to, that, I mean, I would have no other choice to probably entertain moving my operation to Fargo. We have 14 acres, rather large shop. I pay $65,000 bucks a year in property taxes. So I would obviously sell that facility I'm at now and move somewhere else in Moorhead because I want to stay in Moorhead. But if it doesn't go, if everybody wants to keep pushing this along, and I have no choice but to probably move either, so, thank you.
Cody, did you get his name? Did you need any more information? You got it? Very good. Anybody else want to speak? Come forward, please.
Good morning. My name is Bailey Enquist. I work with Legends Bar and Grill, and I'm here to represent our staff and our employees. I don't, I mean, I'm not a business owner, nonetheless a small business owner, so I can't speak on that side of things, but one thing that I will say is really admirable about Cody and Marissa is that they pushed for me to be here so that you guys can hear how this is directly affecting our staff. The majority of our staff right now, all of our staff right now is hurting. Even those who use Legends as a part-time job, maybe they just work in the industry just to get a little bit of fun money, they pick up a few shifts here and there. Everyone is hurting, not just financially, but mentally as well. I don't know if any of you guys have worked in this industry, but we're in this industry because of the people. We love the people. We go to our job to serve, so whether that be to simply get you a drink and a nice meal, we're happy to do that. Whether that be someone for you to talk to and ears that listen, we're here for that. Whether that just be the conversation because you're new to town, you don't know anybody, you don't have anywhere to go, you have no one to talk to, you have no family here, you come in on a holiday and you just want to be with good people. That's what we're here for. We're here for the people. Financially, our staff is, this has been crippling for a lot of our staff. The majority of our staff, we have staff who are from 18 years old to 43 years old who are going to college to pursue a career eventually. A lot of them are going into or wanting to be those frontline workers. And the reason that they're in this industry and the reason that they work in our type of job and our type of industry is because they're able to work two or three days a week and make enough money to pay their bills and live comfortably and put enough time into their school, because they are going full-time or part-time, they're able to put their all into their school, which is so important. I mean, I, this has been not a joke when it comes to helping support the staff who are being affected all across the state, but it's been extremely disheartening and it's been extremely stressful for all of our staff who have looked at unemployment options and who have filed for unemployment, and they're offered maybe $200 a week. We have staff that need to pay for children, they're responsible for children. We have staff who are responsible for pets. We have staff who are trying to pay just their bills and not live paycheck to paycheck, trying not to dip into savings if they're lucky enough to have savings still after the first round of the pandemic. We have staff who are trying to pay off their school tuition. We, it goes on and on. Our group is so diverse, and if you look at Legends, if you were to come into our doors and look at our staff and see the interaction, you'll see that Marissa and Cody aren't just hanging on to us just so that when we open back up, we're able to staff our hours. They hang on to us because we're family and because they know that there's no support out there for us right now besides them. So we're fortunate enough to have that. I know that all across the state, there's not servers and bartenders who are lucky enough to have, I'm sorry, to have owners like this. But this has been so hard on our staff. It's mentally draining if you look at them. They are the shells of who they were. So all we can ask for is, and your guys' words, your, I mean, your reaction to Marissa's letter and her speech was more than what we could have asked for. After the meeting last night, as Josh said, that was extremely depressing. We went into this with hope, and we came out of it looking down a rabbit hole of this continuing. And they, as a business, they can't continue, and as employees, we can't continue. We don't want to leave Moorhead. We were not voted the best bar and grill and the best restaurant in Fargo-Moorhead. We weren't voted that simply because we do have great food or we do have great drinks. We were voted that because when you come in, you're greeted with a smile, our service is impeccable, and our people, their personalities shine through. That is not happening right now. They are the shells of who they were. We're in this business because we care about the people in Moorhead. We want to just put whatever happiness we can into their lives, and we're not able to do that right now. So I just ask that you guys move forward with the letter. I think that this is the ball that we needed to get rolling, and I appreciate your guys' just your thoughts and actually taking this into consideration and taking this seriously. And I appreciate the fact that this is not falling on deaf ears. So know that we appreciate your- So know that we appreciate your time, and no one wants to move to Fargo, but we need to be realistic with our livelihoods and with the business as well. And I also would like to comment, we, we aren't wanting to open up recklessly. We, as Marissa said, we take COVID very seriously. I myself have also lost two people to COVID. We take this very seriously, but as Missy said, this is not a fair playing ground. And why are we shut down when you can go into Walmart, and it's, it's pretty willy-nilly there? I mean, you go there, and there's how many? Countless people, sometimes not wearing their masks, sometimes not wearing it correctly. So it doesn't make sense, when from the start of this, we've taken this so seriously as to move to disposable silverware, disposable dishware, glassware. We wear our masks, we enforce the mask, our customers respect it. We've gone to extensive cleaning processes to, by working with other businesses, cleaning businesses, we brought in the professionals. How can we open, how can we open safely and remain open safely? We've done everything that we can, so it's not fair where, or not, I don't want to say not fair, but it doesn't make sense as to how there's places like Walmart and Target and things like that that are open, who are not taking those precautions when we are. So I want you guys to take that into consideration as well. We're not looking to open recklessly, we're not looking to throw the mandates out the door. All we're asking for is our doors to be open, and we will respect guidelines as we have from the beginning. So I appreciate you guys, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Well, thank you for your comments. I definitely have to agree with you on that. The unfortunate thing is that we don't make the rules, and yes, we will support you, but I, I think it's pretty much a, I'm sure that we're going to send that letter, and we're going to do that, you know, in support of you, you know, but you got to remember, we're not the ones that are going to be making the decision. I mean, we will support, uh, support you, but that's as far as we're, okay, Jenny?
I do have something that I think is important for the community to know. If you enjoy the businesses in your community, and if you enjoy running to the store just down the block, or for me to drive into town and go to a store, you need to shop there, and you need to order out, and you need to maybe go above and beyond what you normally would do right now, because if we as a community don't rally around our businesses, they won't be there. And, and you know that, the people here, you all know that. I think during the holiday season, it can be quite easy to just shop online and just ship it. Remember that these businesses are all going above and beyond to offer touchless pickup, to offer safe alternatives to their business. You know, I, I agree with what you said. We're not saying we want to be reckless. COVID is real, we've lost people, the community is reeling, there are people that, that don't feel comfortable dining in, and that's okay. You're saying that's okay, but what you're saying is, give us the opportunity to safely do business, and, and that's the thing that the community needs to know. If you want these businesses here, if you enjoy them being here, you need to shop local to keep them here.
Mr. Chair, I couldn't agree with that more, but I, I don't think it's enough. And, and the reason I say I don't think it's enough, because we are, what, three weeks into our second shutdown from these, that these folks have had to endure? And, you know, so, if, if the greater powers that be, that Commissioner Gross, you talked about, that's making the rules, if, if, if they seem to think then that, that we can't do this, or you can't do this, and you can't do it safely, then I think we need to, to ask to go about what, was it, Marissa, was it your husband that spoke? Yeah, so, you know, I, I think, I think the state needs to be able to, or, or needs to inquire as to what your losses were, and all of that should be replenished, not a portion of it, but all of it. And there, you know, I mean, you all, you've been in business for a while, Cody and Marissa, you, you guys have been around for a while, and, and you've got records, and you should be able to show what this has done to you. Even doing that, it wouldn't, it won't make you whole. And, and, and then addressing the employee standpoint, and the devastation that's caused to them, I agree, I don't, 200, 200 bucks a week isn't going to cut it, you know? That's what it is, I, I don't, I don't know, but, so I, I think, I think we need to be, to, to be clear that, that in our letter, that if, if, if their decision is going to be as, as maybe you, your intel has, that another month of shutdown, then they, they better, they better call another session and call it real soon and fix this. You, you people invested a lot of money into Morehead, into Clay County. You invested it as a business opportunity, but you also invested as a community opportunity. And as Commissioner Mojo said, we as a community need to step up, but I don't think that's, it's, it's, it's proven to not be enough, or you wouldn't be here. So, thank you for, for all of your comments, and I personally still take this COVID very seriously, and whatever we need to do, it needs to be done safely. But I think, I think we can, we can still accomplish a lot of this, but.
Anybody else want to speak? Go ahead.
I'm Cody Parr, Marissa's partner.
Excuse me, did you get that?
I'm Cody Parr. I just want to say that the money isn't, it's never going to be enough. I mean, and it's not about that. We're not trying to get rich doing this. I mean, that's not what it's about for us, but short of getting the doors open, even at the 50%, anything short of that's not going to work. I mean, we've heard rumors of 25% opening, that, we don't have enough bar to do 25%. I mean, it's just not, it's not a feasible deal. So if you're talking 216 million spread out the whole state of Minnesota, what are we going to get, 10 grand? I mean, they can keep the 10 grand, I don't want it. That's not, I mean, I can't even pay rent for 10 grand. Not to mention, we are 99% ready to open another bar in Morehead, that we have $1 million invested in. A million dollars that we can't recoup a penny of, and we have to pay rent. So we're still paying $20,000 a month to have businesses that we cannot make our money on. We can't even pay. So, I mean, we have to pay all this out of our own pocket, and, I mean, nobody has enough money to do that, so. It's short of opening, I don't know that any amount of money, or they could, they could never turn it around fast enough. So if they said, oh, yeah, we're going to give you a billion dollars to spread it out amongst all of Minnesota, how long does that take? We don't have that much time. I mean, we need the freaking doors open. That's the only way we're going to make this work, and we need this other bar open. So, I mean, honestly, had I known that, had any idea that the state of Minnesota would act the way they do, that bar would have been in Fargo in a minute. I would never, you know, and I talked to Judd about this, about moving it to Fargo, and he begged we didn't. And now, look at us. So, I mean, we're, we're millions of dollars invested in Morehead, and the county, so we just, and that's it. I mean, it ain't about us getting rich, it's just about us taking care of our people, and, I mean, this, this is Marissa's dream, that's what, and I just get to be a part of it. This is what she always dreamed of doing, so I'm along for the ride. It ain't about getting rich, it's just about good people, so, that's all I got. Thanks.
And thank you for your comments, and, I mean, I could probably say, oh, I feel your pain, but I don't, because I'm not involved as, as you are. I mean, there is pain there, and I, I agree with that, and we're going to try and do some, I mean, we'll support you on that. Anybody else?
Mr. Chair, just to, just to maybe make this formality, so that these people know that we're doing some action, I, I would move that we authorize our administrator to send a letter electronically today to the governor of Minnesota and the staff to address the concerns and issues of our businesses in Morehead and Clay County in regards to the shutdown. Cody, I know, I know you say it isn't about the money, but it is about the money. I, I really do think it is about the money, at least for now, to, to get you the relief until you can get open, I, I, I just do, but, but I, I, I agree, I agree with you that 10,000 won't cut it. So, so I, I would, I would move that we have our administrator send a, an electronic letter to the governor today, so that he has it prior to his anticipated announcement that I think is supposed to come tomorrow.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion on that?
I'll third that motion.
Okay. All right, well, there's a motion by Kevin, and second by Jenny, to write a letter of support, and do it electronically to get it there today. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And with that, I really want to appreciate, I mean, appreciate the fact that you people took your time to come forward and talk to us. I mean, to come forward and not just talk, and wherever you're at, at home and stuff like that, and complain about, but you came forward, and that's really, it's a good sign. You know, to say that, boy, we like, I always to see a roomful of people to come here to complain, that's, that's not what you're here to do, you know, you're, you're here for, for a reason, and I appreciate you coming forward to letting us know about your concerns. And you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting too, or whatever, but we will continue on with our meeting then, if there's no one else that wants to talk. Thank you.
Thank you all for being here.
Okay, we've got minutes that need to be approved from December the 1st.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
We've got a motion by Jenny, second by Kevin, to approve the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The bills, approve approval. Got a motion by Jim.
Second.
Second by Grant, to approve the bills and vouchers. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, with that, we'll go into Kathy.
Mr. Chair, just briefly, I know that during Our Citizens to Be Heard, there's an opportunity for people to share feedback electronically. Did anyone?
Oh, excuse me.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Thank you. Kathy and Jamie, I guess, give us a report on COVID-19 for this week.
Good morning, and thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. I don't know if you can hear me with my mask on. So I, I handed out the numbers from today's date. You can see that our confirmed cases are, in Clay County, are 5,799. So actually, the confirmed cases have gone up. There are about 320 more cases than there were in December 2nd, so we, we do have an increase in the positive cases. I think when Commissioner Campbell was talking about a decrease, we're seeing a decrease in active cases, and part of that is, we're getting people out of isolation. There was a, a kind of a glitch with a number of cases being followed with the Minnesota Department of Health. There was, there was a, quite a lapse, so we're seeing a, a bit more of the numbers varied in the active cases, and then we're reporting those that were out of isolation. Some of those cases were not even caught during their period of isolation, so we're seeing some variances there, so it's, it's a difficult to just see those numbers without having the understanding about what was happening. So we're still seeing increases in the, in the confirmed positive cases. However, the testing has been down, so when we look at, maybe they're not increased as much as they had been, we're seeing that the testing at the same time, across the state of Minnesota, the testing numbers have gone down. So we're, we can't correlate that suddenly we're getting quite a decrease in numbers, because the testing will catch those positive cases, and with the testing numbers down, then you're going to see less of those cases. For example, even in our saliva testing in Morehead, the increases of testing, we had a large increase November, the week of November 15th, we had about 1,000 more that we tested, and then it decreased after that, so we had 700, approximately 700 less testing done that, that week of November 22nd, and then again, another reduction of close to 300 the week of November 29th. Now this latest week, we have about 625 less tests, so we're seeing even the last few weeks, the decrease in the testing and the saliva site, and so that's just one example where that's in, in Clay County, but, but across the state, they're seeing less testing, so clearly then, the positive cases look less. So we don't want to, we still want to keep in mind that this virus has not gone away, we're still, the majority of the spread again is still in the large gatherings, people that aren't masked, so we're really seeing that's really, and across the state, that's the example of where they're seeing it. But we're still high, and we still need to recognize this, this is a situation that we can't really become lax in, so our message continues to be the social distancing, the masking, avoid the large gatherings, there's large gatherings without masks is where a lot of it is happening. So we really want to be conscientious about continuing what we're doing now to, to keep the spread lessened, so I expect that we'll maybe see some increase in testing as, as we go along now, be this month, but we'll see how that goes as, as the numbers of tests decrease. So it's, it's interesting that we're, we're seeing that decrease, but that explains a little bit about why you're seeing the discrepancy in numbers. We're still seeing the number of deaths also, we have 69 in, in Clay County, so the active, the number of deaths have varied on the spreadsheet, if you'll see, just because they weren't actually put in at their, at the time of death, so they've been added later. So we're seeing 69 deaths now as a total for Clay County, and then you see the number of, of deaths in, in Minnesota as well. The cumulative deaths are the 4,462, and we've hit over 300,000 deaths in the United States, so we're, we're still seeing those numbers. And then the 14-day positivity rate, now granted, that's only through November 28th because of the number of cases that come on. To get an accurate number, you really can't project any further than that. We can, we can have our staff looking at all of our cases and trying to project a 14-day case rate, but it's not as accurate as doing the two weeks behind, so it went down a little bit from the previous two-week period. It's at 186 now, but that 14-day case rate is, is quite variable. You can't, you can't project that day-to-day and be accurate. The accumu-
I have a question. On the Clay County Daily New Cases, the graph, you only have the new cases until November 22nd. Can you tell me why?
Yeah, that's, that's as far as she got with the graph. We have the, we don't have the additional new cases because of the delay in the, so there, there is quite a delay in getting them on from the Minnesota Department of Health to our med system, so sometimes that is a delay. I'm not sure why it only shows through November 16th. I'm not sure about that graph, I can check with them and see, but it shows our confirmed cases on the following page through December 9th, and then our, our confirmed cases for today, December through December 14th.
Because I am tracking our daily new cases personally, when I see them reported every day, and they're, they are on a track down, and I, and I, I mean, I, I understand that there's a delay, and I understand that we're still in a critical point, and I agree with you.
Yep.
But we also have to admit that the measures that were taken have worked to slow, slow the curve, and if you look at the data, it will show that that curve has slowed, and I think it's important for people to know that, too.
Yeah, I think those people that are masking and social distancing and not being in large gatherings, that all is measures that we need to all be conscientiously aware of, but the, the fact is, the numbers continue to increase a little bit, so we're not on a downward trend yet, but we should, hopefully with the vaccine coming out, and Jamie, I'll talk about the vaccine distribution, once we can start vaccinating, that also helps, but it's going to take quite a long time before we- going to take quite a long time before we even get to the vaccinations for the general population. So our amounts of vaccine will be less. But Jamie will talk about the vaccine distribution.
I have a question for you, Kathy.
Yes.
Where are these large gatherings without masks or social distancing taking place?
Just in the community, but that's across Minnesota. They're noticing that. So large gatherings.
I'm not seeing any of that here.
Yeah, I'm.
Can you give me an example of where that's taking place?
I cannot, but the schools are reporting that as well. So when they see large gatherings, that's when their numbers go up. And I don't know where the large gatherings are happening. It might be in homes, it might be in.
That's supposedly the primary cause of COVID spread.
Yeah.
But I can't hear an example of it.
Yeah, I can't give you an example in Clay County, but that's the example across the straight, the state, as the Epi's are following those.
I'm having a hard time understanding that as well.
Yeah, it's the community spread.
Is it the riots you're talking about?
Pardon me?
Riots? Is that what you're talking about?
Well, I'm not necessarily saying riots. It's just gatherings of people.
That's the only gatherings of people without masks that I've seen going on in Minnesota.
Yeah, they're, well, and I can't, I am not privy to where the gatherings are happening. The Minnesota Department of Health is tracking that.
Yeah.
But that's, large gatherings, I don't know. But there are gatherings of people without masks. So it.
Boy, I sure haven't seen any.
Yeah, I personally haven't seen any, but I'm not the one tracking that. Other questions about the numbers? You know, when you look at the numbers, and we have to be careful where we get the numbers, Minnesota Department of Health has the numbers for tracking specifically daily numbers. It'd be pretty hard for individuals to track those because only Minnesota Department of Health and local public health has the accurate cases on our med system. They are not public, and they're not for anyone else viewing. So we have to be very conscientious about the tracking of the numbers. So we follow strictly, I'm sorry.
So when Minnesota Department of Health daily releases those numbers, what numbers are those? If you're telling me that public health only has that number?
No, Minnesota Department of Health and public health.
Okay, but you're saying they're not public?
Yeah, the active cases that are currently following until they're all vetted through are not public. That's correct.
And so I guess that's just.
Well, there's a delay in the system, is what I'm saying.
So the daily number is incorrect?
Yeah, it's, well, it's a delay. It's not incorrect. It's just a delay in the system. We, you know, once you get the active cases, and you have to keep in mind, people get tested over on the Fargo side. So it might be a number of days delay. That's why it's daily, not, you can't, if you give a daily number, there's still going to be some outlined cases out there. It's the way the tracking is. It's not accurate day-to-day because the numbers flow in as we get those cases.
So all of the, you know, I want to go back to your comment about the testing being down.
Yeah.
And all of the testing that's done is, has been volunteer testing.
Correct.
Right? It's all volunteer testing. And going to what Commissioner Mojo just said just a couple of minutes ago, is that the measures that were taken appear to be helping. It seems to me that if tests are down, maybe it's because people can't go anywhere. And there's no need to test, you know. And again, I don't, I don't, I'm just saying that that's probably a reality of what's happening right now because nobody can, unless you go to Walmart a lot, or go to Menards a lot, you know. So there's probably, in a lot of instances, there's no, not as much reason to be tested if everybody's just staying home, you know, and working from home. That's, I'm not suggesting that's a bad thing, but it's being safe on their part. But I just, I just think that to suggest that testing is down because people maybe aren't concerned about it anymore, and I'm not suggesting you said that either, but, yeah, but, yeah, I mean, there's.
Yeah. I'm not saying that people aren't concerned or that the measures aren't helping. I'm just saying also, you have to take into account, when testing's down, then your numbers are going to be lower. So we have to take it, it's one package deal. It's not just one single item. Yeah, it's great for the people that are masking and avoiding, you know, Thanksgiving. They expected a little bit of a bump up with numbers. There were some gatherings, some people traveled, some people got together, went out of state. There, you know, there was those. And then there was many people that followed the guidance and stayed home. And we're not in large gatherings.
Well, I'm also really concerned that, and there was just brief mention of that by somebody from the public this morning, but what this is doing to the mental health of our community, it's, being locked up is not healthy.
Right.
I'm really concerned that where those numbers are going. We don't get reports from anybody on those numbers. I'm very concerned of what's happening there.
Right, we are too. And we understand, even the businesses, that the impact for them is devastating. We completely understand that. So we're not trying to be asymptotic of all of that. We're just going to give you the accurate information about numbers and what we know. We don't know everything, but we know a fair amount about why the numbers are reflecting the way they do.
It's even interesting, as far as in my family, my siblings, they took a test, not to see whether they got it, but to see if they have the.
Antibodies.
If they had it before, you know. But, I mean, I had a sister that, she found out she had COVID. Never had any symptoms or anything like that. So there's a lot of people out there that probably even have COVID that we have no idea about. I mean, I'm just saying one instance, but I'm not trying to make a big thing of that. But there's people out there more than likely that have had it that we're not even aware of, too.
Right. Some people have really minimal symptoms, and so they may not even think that they're positive. They may think it's just another virus because their symptoms are so minimal. So we might see those people, they don't, maybe they don't get tested because they don't think it's significant enough. So the symptoms vary.
Or they have no symptoms.
Correct, or they have no symptoms. We do have cases where there's really no symptoms. They don't even realize they have it. So it's across the board, from none to.
That's why I say it's really spreading. I mean, it's spreading sometimes because of that, people, people aren't aware of it, that they have it.
That's correct.
That's why we've always got to be careful, wear the mask.
You're right. And even in the grocery stores and any place that you go. That's correct. Other questions or comments about the numbers?
One last thing, Kathy. Who benefits by you and I wearing a mask?
Both of us.
Thank you.
You wear a mask for yourself, and you wear a mask for everyone around you. Absolutely. Okay, Jamie, talk a little bit about our vaccination.
Can you hear me? I'm okay, okay. Good morning. I just want to share some information on the rollout of the vaccine in Minnesota. Governor Walz, Minnesota COVID-19 peacetime emergency extension has allowed us to continue to work on that vaccine rollout. Minnesota Department of Health is working with local public health and regional healthcare coalitions to implement a phased-in approach to the vaccine delivery in Minnesota. Phase 1A pushes vaccine out to healthcare personnel and residents of long-term care facilities. Priority for healthcare personnel starts with occupational risk of exposure to COVID-19. Phase 1A includes three priority areas. We are working on each of these priority areas on a weekly basis and given tasks to complete in order to assist the Minnesota Department of Health in getting vaccine out to our area. Priority 1A, or, excuse me, in 1A Priority 1, where we are right now, that focuses on healthcare workers providing COVID care to individuals. And that includes long-term care, nursing facility staff, emergency medical services staff, COVID testers, and COVID vaccinators. And so that's where we are right now, and that's where the first amount of vaccine will come out. The second priority will focus on those same healthcare providers, but those with less contact with COVID individuals. And then thirdly, Priority 3 in 1A will help us to get vaccine to all other individuals in those healthcare systems. Minnesota Department of Health will ship vaccine to healthcare providers, local public health, and regional healthcare coalitions for administration in our area. There also is the Federal Pharmacy Partnership Program, and those two programs are working alongside each other. The federal pharmacy program, the PPP, is actually a partnership with the federal government and with pharmacies to vaccinate long-term care residents and staff. Initially, the focus was on long-term residents and not staff in hopes that they would already be vaccinated as healthcare providers. But that's an opportunity for both. And so those two tracks are focusing on our healthcare personnel and our most vulnerable individuals in our long-term care. Local public health is currently working with regional healthcare coalitions to identify and plan for serving long-term care staff and residents not registered under the PPP federal program, and EMS providers not affiliated with a healthcare system, and also the community vaccinators. So that is our task right now from the Minnesota Department of Health. They're hoping that with the PPP program, they can catch most of those healthcare providers and residents of long-term care. If they weren't able to register for that, we're identifying them to serve through Minnesota. And then also, emergency medical services providers that are not part of a healthcare system. And so that's our task for this week that we're working on. And, you know, if, I'm not going to go into detail on the vaccines, but the Pfizer vaccine is one of the vaccines that's being rolled out, and we're anticipating Moderna as well. Vaccine, we're told, could be coming in the next week or so. We don't have exact amounts, and we don't have an exact timeframe.
I can just share, and I apologize, Jamie, because I got the call right before I came over here from the Minnesota Department of Health. But they expect that our community health boards, so that is Clay, Wilkin, Ottertail, and Becker, will get a shipment of vaccine next week. It's around 400 doses for the four counties. So that's the initial, around 400. They can't give me an exact amount. So if you think about 400 doses with four counties, we're not going to get a whole lot of vaccine to begin with.
So that's 200 people.
Well, no, no, I'm sorry, Commissioner Campbell. They are going to withhold, they're going to not hold back. They're going to give us our shipment of 400, and they want us to use all of those 400.
On the first half.
And then the following week, they'll ship us the next 404 to manage, the following week or two, as the second dose comes three to four weeks later. So they will give us the second shipment. They won't ship us the, I think you asked the question last week, too. They're not going to ship us the 400 and tell us to hold 200. So they'll give us the second dose shipment in the next shipment coming. But we'll get it in plenty of time to give people the second dose. But so it's not, it's still not, 400 doses across four counties is not going to be initially very much. So we will have to focus, we'll be planning, we're going to get it sometime next week. So we need to plan where that may go. The recommendation is for sure, those that may do the vaccinations should be the first ones to receive that. So we still need to work with, in our, work within our incident command team to determine where those go. But it's not a lot. So that was, that just came at 8:25.
So similar to our experiences with H1N1 vaccine, we'll get a amount of vaccine. We'll be told the target population, and we will get it out to those individuals. And then the next round will come, and that'll be that same process. So the difference is, there are a lot of partners with healthcare and pharmacies. There are a lot of engaged partners.
Any other questions on the vaccine or anything else that?
So are the, that 400, is that, so that's going for the four counties? But is there additional that goes directly to hospitals and clinics?
Yes.
That's separate, right?
That's correct. And that's the really ultra-cold, so difficult to maintain and manage. And really, only the health facilities have the capability of keeping that ultra-cold. So as you saw in the news, probably, that Sanford already has their ultra-cold and providing their vaccines. And so the health facilities will get that. The nice thing about the Moderna is it's frozen, and so we have the capability to easily manage that vaccine.
Okay, any? Very good. Thank you for your update again.
Thank you.
And I'll go to an update on the housing assistance program. I take it you're Emma Schmidt, okay?
Good morning. I'm Emma Schmidt with Lakes and Prairies Community Action Partnership. CAP LP is our nickname. And I'm here today to give you an update on our COVID Housing Assistance Program. The acronym for it is CHAP, so we've been calling it CHAP. This funding, launched on August 24th, is a part of the $100 million in statewide assistance for people that are not able to make their housing payments because of a COVID-19-related impact. So our agency serves Clay and Wilkin counties. We were granted $771,645, with most of that going to direct assistance to households for things like rent payments, utility payments, mortgages, other housing-related payments for folks that haven't been able to pay those bills because of a COVID-19-related impact. So we've been able to help households that have been sick with COVID, that have been taking care of somebody else that has COVID, that haven't been able to work because of COVID, a lot of different situations that we've learned about. So like I said, it's a very short turnaround. It started August 24th. The funding initially was supposed to end December 30th. We've received 918 applications total for the program. So they actually, the deadline to apply was December 7th. And we have, they've given us now until January to process the applications, which is a sigh of relief for us because we have, we've had staff working, you know, all hands on deck to be able to administer these funds. We've got folks working overtime. And we'll continue to do that in December and January to make sure we get through as many applications as we can. And like I said, the deadline has closed now. So at this point, we're working through all the applications that have been submitted.
Emma, can you clarify the percentage of Clay County applicants versus Wilkin County of that over 900 applicants?
I'd have to pull the exact number, but, you know, if I were to estimate, I would say probably in the 90s percent. But I can get the exact number for.
Well, I think just a rough estimate is fine. So there are, the majority of them are definitely Clay County applicants. And the reason I ask that is, when our CARES Act committee was tasked with finding how to best allocate dollars, when we heard Lakes and Prairies was able to secure that large of a grant, it allowed us to not need to focus on the housing piece since you were able to take care of that and focus on other areas for community resiliency. So I think it's important for residents to know that that's why the housing piece wasn't necessarily included in our community resiliency discussion because there is such a large percentage that will go out of the Lakes and Prairies piece.
Yeah, and I can just give you some numbers on what we, who, how many households we've assisted so far. So through November are these numbers. We have distributed $536,996 in direct assistance to households for those past due bills, and we have assisted 426 households. So we expect those numbers, obviously, to increase quite a bit these next couple of months as we play catch-up with all the applications. And I just wanted to mention, too, that Presentation Partners in Housing is a sub-grantee for this project. So they're helping us as well. So I just really want to note that we appreciate their assistance with this project. And then First Link as well has been helping us to navigate the calls and helping us do kind of that frontline triage of seeing if folks are eligible and then connecting them with us. So that has helped, too, to connect clients very quickly with assistance, and then if they're not eligible, with other resources. If anyone has any questions, I'd welcome them as well.
Thank you for your update.
I think we should also note that we did have landlords that had reached out because of the eviction moratorium, that there was a hardship brought on to them because they needed to. needed to pay bills as well. So we made sure to recommend to those landlords to get their renters in contact with you. So it's not just those people that need the assistance, but it really goes to help the other piece as well.
Okay. Next thing we'll have is Joe requests to hire two variable hour custodians for the new administration building. Sorry we're so late with you, Joe. I know you're in a hurry to get back to work.
I'm good.
Okay.
Yes, good morning. Today I'm actually sitting in for Georgia. She's out today, so I'm kind of here on her behalf, but I've also worked with her on this as well too. So this is basically request to hire two variable hours positions for the new administrative building. So, but what we did is it'd been quite a while and we had some suggestions to price compare to hiring it out as well, opposed to in-house. So as you can see in your memo, we have Georgia had contacted four different contractors and we did some price comparison there. And we, I guess the two variable hours together still came in lower than the lowest of the four. So, and we feel we can get a little bit more services out of the variable hours. Anything above and beyond with the contractors would be extra cost. So, so yeah, we looked at both options and it'd been a while, so we would like to go ahead and go with the in-house. So it'd be a total cost of $32,460 annually for two added variable hours.
And we discussed as a committee quite a bit too, and we just felt by having our own people here, if there's something, a need out there during the day, that we're going to have people available to go out there. Whereas if we have a cleaning company, we'll take care of that tonight, you know, whatever. So it's pretty much another reason why we went with our own employees.
I'll make a motion to approve the request.
Second. Okay, we've got a motion by Grant, second by Jim, to approve the request to hire two variable hour employees. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post, okay. Very good.
Thank you, Board.
Okay, with that, we'll go into Darren to talk about the approval of the year-end items.
Good morning.
Morning.
First time at the big show here with the new setup. I feel like I'm yelling into this thing. This is our annual requirement to go through five items to approve for next year, 2021. Just, this did go to the pick last week. We did have some discussion on some of the items and this is what I'm bringing to the Board today for the 2021 adjustments. So the first one is the grid adjustment for 2021. As you recall, back in 2019, 20, and 21, we had union contracts that were signed. So 2021 is already set for several of the union contracts at 3%. All of the grids have been updated based on that, those contracts as well. Do you want me to go through all five and then vote on them individually at the end or?
Do we have to vote on each one or?
I'll vote for it.
Okay. So right now, we're talking about the grid adjustments?
Correct. The grid adjustment for 2021, 3% for all grids.
Okay, these are the contract agreements that we approved before.
Yes.
Move approval.
Okay, we've got a motion by Kevin, second by Jenny, to approve the 3% for all grids. Excuse me, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the second thing is the meal reimbursement rates. As you probably recall, these were updated in 2019, just last year. The meal reimbursement rates would be $15 breakfast, $20 lunch, and $30 dinner. That was, like I said, updated last year.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Jenny, second by Kevin, to approve the meal reimbursement rates. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. The third issue is the per diem rates. These were updated in 2015. It currently sits at $100 per diem. These were also discussed at the pick as well.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve that per diem rates.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Jim, second by Kevin, to approve the per diem rates, which were set at $100. I'd like to make, have some discussion on that. I've got, I feel in this budget, we've asked everybody to tighten your budgets, you know, for all the employees to do what they can, to supervise, to do what we can. So I came up with some sort of formula that I'd like to discuss with you, just see how you, what you feel about it. You can do what you. See, you have a copy there too. What I would like to do is make the per diem rate at $75 per day. That is if you just have one meeting. If the meeting goes into a fourth hour, it would go back to the $100 a day. If you have two meetings or more per day, I would recommend it stay at $100 a day. Or if you have meetings involving, let's say you go over down to Minneapolis for overnight meeting or something like that, those meetings would also be $100. But I think if you just have one meeting sometimes, sometimes they last 30 minutes, sometimes an hour, I'd just like to start somewhere and adjust that per diem rate to $75. There's any other further discussion on that or not?
Well, I certainly can maybe chime in. The per diem rates were changed, I believe Commissioner Everett, who was in District 3, and so they were changed before I got on there. And I think that, at least from the committee assignments that I've noticed in my portfolio since being elected is we've certainly expanded the committee assignments that each person has and in turn has changed the amount of meetings that each person go to. I certainly feel that none of us do this to, for the money. I think we all do it out of the public service and the opportunity to represent our constituents and their constituents' concerns. But I also feel it is important to make sure people are compensated fairly for their time. And last night, a city council person from Moorhead, who is now going off, made the comment that it's important to understand the economics of the people who serve. And by not fairly compensating people for their time, you effectively eliminate a certain demographic from serving. And, and the reason I think that per diems are fair is because there, if a person is not going to take the time to go to their meetings, they're not just collecting it in a check. You know, there are many times when I have three or four meetings a day, not all of them are committee assignments, but I think being an effective leader, make sure you're supposed to go to all meetings, not just your committee assignments. And when we did our wage study, we looked at elected officials in different areas and what their compensation was and what maybe per diems were. And the reason we decided to not change from a per diem setup and a wage setup was that we didn't want to have a huge increase in what the normal wage was by eliminating the per diems, because we still wanted people to make sure they're going to their committee assignments. So I think what you proposed is important and I think it's good for discussion. I don't believe I've ever charged a per diem for travel time, so I'm not sure about that. But I think we need to be careful, not just only what this board is, because I've, I definitely can say we've saved in travel time this year, we saved in conference time, and we didn't have that expenditure. But I want to make sure, I value all of your life experiences greatly and I am not a retired person and I want to make sure that anybody going forward can afford to serve in the capacity that we do. And so it's tricky. I, you know, I think we do need to be cautious about budgets, but I want to make sure we're not eliminating future leaders from that piece as well.
I only, there's very few situations where probably my per diem is going to affect somebody, because a lot of times we do have two meetings in a day. But like I say, we, some sort of part that we're trying to help out too in this budget. So that's why I'm recommending that. Any further discussion? Okay, we've got a motion on the Board to approve the per diem rates at $100 per day. Can't remember who made the motion anymore, sorry. You got that, Colleen?
I made it.
Jim, okay.
Kevin, second.
Jim and Kevin, okay? All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Okay. With that, we'll go into the IRS.
Okay, the IRS mileage rate. Last time I checked it, it's not been put out yet. Currently, it's 57.5 cents per mile. That's the 2020 rate. Normally, that doesn't fluctuate more than a couple cents. And as soon as I get that, I can post that in the personnel policy. Usually comes out very towards the end of December. And as soon as I can get that, I will post that. But I don't think it'll be a big influx of one way or the other.
May I move that we established the IRS rate?
And a motion by Kevin to establish the IRS rate?
Second.
Second by Grant. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post furlough program?
Okay, last but not least is the 2021 furlough program. You have approved this for, ever since I've been here at least and probably before that. It allows employees to take up to 144 hours of unpaid leave. Some people use it very well, some people don't use it at all. As of, I think it was the first of December, we had 850 hours of furlough that was used in 2020 for a total savings of wages of $21,660. So it is a benefit to the county. I think it's also a benefit to the employees who don't, may not have enough leave or want to take a day off and they don't have the leave that they are needed and they're willing to take that without pay. So far, it seems to be a pretty, pretty good program for the county.
I'll move to approve continuation of the furlough program.
Okay, a motion by Grant to continue the furlough program.
Second.
Second by Jim. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll go into the committee boards. Jim, you want to start us off today?
Yep. On Wednesday last week, we had the Northwest Region Emergency Communications Board meeting virtually, and we just heard the usual reports and they spoke about the policy of enforcing the attendance. And there was apparently a gap in the city of Moorhead not having representation on this board and there was an attempt to determine why they don't have anybody assigned to that from the Moorhead City Council at this point in time. And so that was one of the discussions that we had. Everything else was pretty routine. And I think Lieutenant Gabe Tweeten was there in attendance as well, with Captain Derek Swenson from the Moorhead PD was also there. So, were you there as well? Okay. That's my report.
Hey, thank you, Grant.
Let's see, I had a couple solid waste meetings we met with city staff last week about the new transfer station and how issues were going to be handled there. And it was a productive meeting and there'll be some things coming forward and that in the future. We had a solid waste meeting yesterday out at the landfill to look at the progress there. Everything is going very well and should be completed soon, the project out there. And let's see, I had EDC annual meeting last week and that was just kind of a different situation there. They had reports from staff and it was short and sweet. And let's see, I had MCIT annual meeting last week also and they did the usual business, handled the elections that were on order and gave financial reports and that type of thing. That was it.
Okay, Jenny?
Thank you. Last Tuesday, after our truth and taxation meeting, I had the watershed human resources meeting. We had a very in-depth update from Ida Bailey on a wage study continuing the, using Houston engineering for contracted positions or having watershed employees themselves. I did forward that report to our administrator and Steve, if you would forward that to the commissioners as well. They will discuss further in January what to do, but it appears to be a $65,000 annual savings by having those employees employed through Houston. So more to come from there. On Wednesday, I had the Association of Minnesota Counties meeting with extension. That meeting was designed to look at the contracted agreements with extension for the county-employed positions. As you recall, the university opted for a 0% increase next year in lieu of the hardships that COVID brought on to the counties. So we had a discussion about those contracts moving forward. We haven't effectively made motions on what those percentages will be. They will be nominal, but we will act in March. One thing to note is that we've never really addressed the 4-H interns in those contracts. It was brought to my attention that not always are travel costs included with those 4-H interns and that becomes a hardship oftentimes. Those are college kids that if they're going to remote areas of the county, we need to make sure we're compensating. So we're making sure that that is part of the discussion as well, moving forward. The SWCD meeting, great updates from them on everything that they continue to do during COVID. Lots of state meetings are now happening online, so good updates from there. We did thank Richard Menholt from being on the Board. He's represented the ag sector quite well throughout his years as there is a new supervisor coming on, so we did meet him as well. I attended the Lakes and Prairies implied bias training and important training that Lakes and Prairies put on after the unrest that happened in St. Paul this summer. I think it's important that they are continuing to look within to make sure that they're representing all of our citizens as well as possible. I had a Lakeland Mental Health meeting with the CEO in regards to personnel concerns and employee morale during COVID has been challenging as they've seen the stress of the people that service their clinics. Last night, I attended the truth and taxation of the Moorhead City Council meeting, so it was important to hear where they're at there. As you've seen in the paper, they're experiencing low increases in their budgets as well. I had a law library meeting where we discussed the new hire that happened, hopefully to start in the next couple of weeks. We were short at Quorum, so we weren't able to act on the financials, but we will be looking at those in the coming weeks and, or next week hopefully, and talked about future membership. And then again, last night, I attended the Buffalo Red River Watershed District meeting. There was good conversation on the applications that are going forward. There's some concerns from landowners about a, oh, that waterway up, is it a cattle crossing up north of Oakport by Georgetown? So there is a discussion about what to do there. Engineering has looked at that. They're having citizen input on that. We'll see going forward. And then they also discussed the HR committee recommendations. They will have a meeting, I believe, January 25th. It will be an in-person meeting so that as many people as possible. It will be an in-person meeting, so that as many people as possible can weigh in on what their HR decision will be, but they have made two hires for administration out there. And I believe that concludes my reports.
Last Wednesday, the ninth, we had a highway tracking meeting. We, we talking, primarily, it was a meeting to focus on the project that's going to be going on in Holly and the MOU that we have on that. We also had a solid waste meeting with the City of Moorhead to talk about the transfer station ownership and future operations and to get that ball rolling. One of the things that we, we, we agreed upon in our discussions is that, that our administrator and the city administrator should work on transferring ownership of the land that is currently owned by the city to the county. And of course, that would, what, what offers out there is that we would pay them what they paid for the land, including the special assessments. You know, we took the opinion that, that we don't want to, the county's going to be building the transfer station, and we don't want to be building something on land that we don't own. So, so, and I think, and it was pretty positive on, on, on all sides there, that that's the direction. And that would be built into the total cost of that, of that project, to add that land cost. So that'll, that'll be coming for this board at some point in time for some action on that, and discussion. On Thursday, I had a Lakes Country Service Cooperative Audit Committee meeting, followed by the actual board meeting. That went really well. The audit turned out really well, and they basically said that, that, that organization is probably in the best financial position they've been in the last five or six years for the year 2020. So they, they're doing a nice job admin, through admin on that co-op. On Friday, we met again in person with our highway engineers and, and the folks from Holly in regards to the MOU, and we had some discussions. They had some concerns about cost share issues, we, based on the original MOU. And, you know, I think we had a really good, really good conversation there, and I think we're probably going to be able to clean that up a little bit, based on, on new, new data. Yesterday afternoon, we had a solid waste construction meeting out at the landfill that, that the new road is in now, that goes up to the area for commercial, no, not commercial, but for our, our trucks to, to unload. And also, the, the citizen, the new citizen waste area that they're looking at for dumping is moving right along, so it's really doing well. That concludes my report.
Okay. All right, last Wednesday, it started out with the Extension Committee meeting that we had. We had a lot of reports of 4-H. They're, they're moving along pretty good yet. They, they still got eleven clubs that are meeting and pretty active in that. Master Gardens Lynn Flanners have been on there for quite a few years, has resigned from that, and they've got a new person taking over for that, Christian Volz, who'll be taking over there. Randy's been very busy with giving presentations. He's on the radio. He's got a newspaper article in the extra all the time, and Randy Nelson has been very busy as far as horticulture and agriculture part. Rosie Nutrition gives a good report, all the activity she's doing. She's amazing how busy she's keeping with, busy with nutrition and stuff like that. We also had a little bit of discussion that, as far as office space. I don't know if they've contacted you yet or not. I don't know whether they're looking at less office space or moving around a little bit or whatever, but I told them to get in touch with Georgia, but I know Georgia hasn't been back yet. I think she's on vacation, so I haven't been able to do that. Ben gave quite a few, there's quite a few series of stuff that's available to people in the county, different things on crop and pest control, on wills, retirement, transition planning. So there's a lot of series that are available. I don't know if all the people are knowledgeable of that in the county, but there's a lot of information that's free to them. And then after that, I attended the last part of the Wild West Watershed District meeting. Nothing much in the last hour that I was involved in, there wasn't much action that I was involved in, that I can report on there. The highway tracking, which later that afternoon, Kevin's already reported on that. Thursday, I have a virtual meeting with Greater Fargo Moorhead Economic Development with Joe Rezo. They gave a good report in how they can assist people, different companies in the area, and they gave several presentations from people who've been assisted by Greater Fargo Moorhead Economic Development. They gave good, good presentations on the benefit of getting help from them. Friday, Friday morning, I had the MCIT meeting, pretty much all that was involved there. I think it was the election of officers and stuff, and, and they, I guess they get, did give a report. Property insurance was down a little bit. Cyber or whatever, yeah, cyber insurance was up. Property insurance was up. Workers, workers' compensation rates were down. They had a ten million dollar dividend. I think we must have, did we get our check ready from them, I think?
We did, Mr. Chair.
Okay, very good. Okay. And I guess they're looking at that reinsurance of the garbage burners, trying to find some sort of insurance to cover that. And after that, the Friday afternoon, I had the meeting with Holly that Kevin's already discussed, where we're talking about the MOU that we signed over two years ago, and we're looking at probably modifying that a little bit before we move on with that, with that project next year. Those were my meetings. You'll probably bring it up or not, but we're looking at a meeting on December 29th.
Mr. Chair, I did have that in my piece. I did talk with Lori Johnson, and with the end of the year coming up, she would request, even if it were just to, to come in and approve the bills, she would, would request that we have a meeting on the 29th.
Okay, do we need a motion on that?
Yes, we do.
So move.
Got a motion by Kevin. I'll second it.
Second.
Jim seconds the meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last, last Wednesday, I met with Commissioner Kaylee Emberger on some additional orientation leading up to next month's taking over as commissioners. That afternoon, I met with construction engineers out at the government, a new government center. They had a number of vendors that were looking at providing bids for fit up. The anticipated date to have those bids to construction engineers is the 18th of this month. They're going to provide us the information on the 21st, Monday, the 21st, and we're hoping to bring a building committee together that afternoon to, to go over those, go over the bids. I do hope to put that before this board on the 22nd. We won't have the numbers that go with the packets, but do hope to bring that forward for a couple of different reasons. Commissioner Haney has been very involved in the process, this process and master planning. With him going off the, the commission, we, I felt that it would, he's got a lot of knowledge in this piece, and it would be important to utilize that in making the decision. The other piece has been indicated that, as we've seen through the CARES project, that there are a lot of, a lot of items that we're going to need in the building that have a lead time, and if we wait, wait until even a week, a week or two later, that goal of being in the facility fully by March 1st would be, would probably not be able to happen. On the, later that afternoon, both participated in the highway tracking and solid waste meetings that have already been addressed. On the attendance, I participated in a webinar with AMC on the, the business and COVID relief that we heard about earlier today. The, throughout this last week, I met multiple occasions with Joe Olson in preparation for the fit up and also planning of what moving's going to look like once we move into a new, new location on Friday. I spoke with Karen Lauer from Barnesville, and we discussed some of the challenges that they're seeing in the Barnesville area as far as the, the impact of the executive order. I talked with Don Durasovich from MCIT in regards to our, to our meeting that we had earlier with the City of Moorhead, and what coverages we would be looking to have once we do open that transfer station. Yesterday, I had a series, or met with Darren on a series of different issues. Again, Darren is going to be gone on vacation, I think, Wednesday's last day, so if there's anything that the commission needs from Darren, he'll, he's available. I met with Brian, Brian Milton, on multiple conversations. I think, I don't know if you want to touch, touch now on, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, I thought I would just give you an update in regard to last week. I spent a fair amount of time on a issue. As you're all well aware, we had an election on November 3rd, 2020. I think as commissioners, you should be very confident in the work that the Auditor's Office and the election judges of Clay County and the effort that they put in to make sure that we had a very effective, fair, and correct election. You've obviously seen on the news, I expect, the different issues nationally that have been happening and some of the challenges. We did receive a challenge to the election, a court case filed by Mr. Edwin Hahn, who had run for the 4A seat with the House of Representatives of Minnesota, against him as a contestant, against Heather Keeler as the contestee. Within that, then, he also named Lori Johnson, as well as the Secretary of State, Steve Simon. And so I spent a good portion of time last week preparing our objection to that challenge, as well as then arguing that in court. And, and the point being that they made some different arguments, that, one, that Lori Johnson should be a party to it, and she wasn't a proper party to it. So it was dismissed against her being a party, as well as the Secretary of State being dismissed as a party. But then ultimately, the entire case was dismissed based on the fact that Mr. Hahn had not made a proper argument that but for some of these claim discrepancies or not liking the absentee ballot piece that had gone out, that in some way he could have ultimately won the election. And so the entire case was thrown out by the court. But I thought I'd give you an update on that, just because whether you would or wouldn't hear about it out in the community or, or hear from anybody else questioning, besides Mr. Hahn, there were several voters that also put their name onto it, which again, they can also do. But I, I would just stress to you as, as commissioners and, and to the community at large, that I think we can be proud of the work that our Auditor's Office has done and the county auditor, Lori Johnson, in carrying out the election and making sure that we had a very fair and effective election. So I'll just give you an update on that. Any questions? I don't know if you, if you want to see the opinion, it's about 28 pages, so it's probably more legalese than you care to look at, but I have a copy if you care to see it.
It's down material.
Thank you, Brian, for that, for that update. Yesterday, also, I had a meeting with Kathy McKay on a series of issues, many of which you heard on this morning. And the last week, I've had multiple conversations with the city administrator, Dan Mawley, and Derek LaPointe, on the, the challenges that we, that we heard here this morning, many of those same issues. I did touch during that conversation on, on the business relief piece and COVID relief piece, that, that there appears to be an agreement that came last night. I would be recommending, I guess, or recommending to this board that we, we pull back our CARES Committee again. This, this isn't CARES funding. The dollars that were allotted by the legislature are specifically for business only, and so we wouldn't be looking at doing any other thing with those dollars other than to, to directly allocate those to businesses. There is a great more latitude in this business relief piece that the legislature is providing, and so that will require some, some discussions on how to best move forward in, in sending out those funds. So we don't have the exact information yet from, from the legislature. We have a, a bill that, that's proposed that we haven't seen yet, but once the governor signs, we'll know exact, the exact dollar amount and, and the ramifications, or, excuse me, the, the guidelines in which we'll be able to, to follow. So, but I would request that we be allowed to bring, bring our, our CARES Committee back, which had both Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Mojo as a part of it.
I, I really don't think that that committee was ever disbanded, so I think they're still in, in, that's still part of their assignments, and I don't think we need a motion on that. We'll just continue that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yesterday afternoon, I also participated in the landfill construction meeting that both Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Whalen had talked about. I also met Joe out at the new government center for an initial planning meeting. I just wanted to just touch on a couple of other things. We did receive a notification as a county this week that the City of Moorhead is going to have a public hearing on January 11th at 5:30. It will be a virtual meeting discussing annexation of three point, or 6.3 acres of the southern city limits, south of 46th Avenue, between 8th and 14th Street, just to notify our citizens there. Next week, we'll be bringing forward the final budget resolution based on the discussion that we had in truth and taxation last week. Again, the, the, what we presented was coming in at a 3.46 percent, taking on those additional funds from our, our fund balances to, to make up that difference. And with that, I concludes my report.
Any further from anybody else? Or John?